Oh, please Tiffany.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councilor Tafe.
Here.
Councilor Bockel.
Here.
Councilor Christensen.
Here.
And Councilor Grackey.
Here.
Alrighty, the first item on the agenda is consent agenda and I don't know if there's any questions or comments about that. Includes claims for payment in the in the minutes of previous meetings and public hearings.
I have a question on one, on just one of the bills.
On what?
I have, I have a question on one of the bills.
Oh, okay.
And maybe we just pay it, they pay us and we pay them. I was just curious about the county recorder with Franny Moe, the variance cost. Is that what happens, that that person pays the city and the city in turn pays the county recorder for that?
Yep, that's something the city pays the forty-six dollars to file it. And I guess Franny or whoever that applies for variance, they have to pay two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Got it, okay.
The kind of goes with the hearing costs.
Right, perfect, thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
So we got a motion by Councilor Tafe to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Apologize, same sign, motion carried. Move on to anyone before the council and I think we have someone here from West Central Initiative tonight.
Not Rick.
Rebecca Lynn Peterson.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, I'm not Rick, he's in Audubon. And I was telling the folks earlier, I almost wore his name tag, but I figured you'd know I wasn't Rick, so. Thanks for having me and thanks for having me early on the agenda. I was mentioning that I have to head down the road to Long Beach for their city council meeting at seven, so. I'll be brief, but I did want to walk you through some of the materials I gave you. So first of all, I have to say Rebecca Peterson, Director of Development and Philanthropic Services. You've got my card there and you know how to get ahold of Rick if you have questions as well. But Rick came up with this really cool idea that we should let our cities and counties know about our last thirty-nine years of investing in your community. Because next year will be our fortieth anniversary. And so the check facsimile that Rick created shows that over the course of thirty-nine years, we've reinvested over one point two million dollars in the community of Starbucks. Now that's from funds that West Central holds, you know, we make grants and loans. But it's also funds, because you have a community fund here that's been populated and reinvested in your community. And then also, we're still that regional development organization that does pass through money from federal grants and state grants, Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED. So totaling one, one million, two hundred and sixteen, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. He worked it out to the penny. And then the next thing in your packet is something that's coming up very quickly. It's tomorrow at our offices in West Central in Minnesota. It's called the Great Wealth Transfer. And we're working with Ben Winchester, who's a state demographer and he's with the University of Minnesota Extension Service. He's been doing a lot of work on this transfer of wealth. And for people in the baby boomer generation, myself and older, there'll be this transfer of wealth to children and charitable organizations over the next decade, totaling billions of dollars in the state of Minnesota, three point two billion dollars. So we're doing this event tomorrow with Ben and he said, he did something for us last year. And in his presentation, he said, if every one of us just took five percent of our assets, you know, the rest we give to our kids, our church, our other charitable organizations, but just took five percent of our assets and gave it to our communities, it would be enormous wealth and benefit our communities greatly, so.
Is this virtual or in-person meeting?
It's in-person, but we are, I talked to Rick about it today. We are hoping to record it. And then we'd also, we won't be able to take Ben Winchester with us always, but we'd like to go on the road and like bring this great transfer of wealth presentation to communities. And if your community would be interested in us coming here, we could organize something to invite community members to. I think it's a really great resource, so. And then the other piece of paper is sort of an outline of all of the programs that West Central Initiative does. So a lot of times people will ask us, well, what do you do? And it's not really an elevator speech, because we do a lot of different things. So on the backside, it's a glimpse at our work, our climate work, our community funds, which you're familiar with, our donor advised funds, early childhood lending, Live Wide Open. I see that you have a welcoming week activity here on Saturday. So that's part of that sort of springboarded out of our Live Wide Open campaign and Rick's been working a lot on that. So thank you for hosting that. So this is just a recap of all of our work. And then the magazine that you have is actually our annual report and it outlines a lot of those programs for you. I guess I'd just like to start toward the back. And there are a bunch of grants that are listed on page twenty-nine, but also then a number of contributors to our workout, West Central Initiative, individuals, businesses, and cities and counties. And I just have to say thank you for your past support and ongoing support. You're listed there. And I think you probably got a letter from us already, just asking if you'd consider just a slight increase. And I know that it's kind of a tricky time for everybody, so I just said to everyone that we send this letter to, how about forty dollars to help us celebrate our, so forty dollars above what you've done in the past to celebrate our fortieth anniversary. So that's up to you to decide. It doesn't have to be that much, it could be whatever you think is appropriate. It could be forty thousand dollars, but probably not going to happen, so. And then Mayor Gary, I'm going to leave you with one copy that you can share with other people, our almanac that we, when we did our May first event, The View From Here. Also a page about our lending program. And then a lot of people have been interested in this and we'll be handing this out tomorrow at the Great Wealth Transfer, our estate planning guide. And the attorney that we've been working with on transfer of wealth uses this a lot. It's very helpful for people who are thinking about how they want to divide up their estate and what their interests are and what you want to leave to family and friends, so. I'll leave that with you.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
We do have a budget work session coming up, so.
Okay, you'll discuss the letter.
We'll be discussing your request and so forth, so.
Perfect, well then, I got it to you in time.
Yep.
All right, good. I'll leave this with you. Anything you want me to bring back, besides Rick Scher says aye, of course.
Yep.
Anything for Rick Scher?
Thank him for everything, so.
Great, and I wouldn't be surprised if he and others show up at your event on Saturday, so.
Oh, that'd be great, so.
Take notes and stuff, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, alright, heading down the road.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Ted Resink from Minnewaska Marine. And give us a recap on the powerboat races, so.
Well, we got it done with.
Yeah.
Any concerns, questions, problems that anybody's seen or heard about?
How did it turn out, do you think, so?
Um, it was okay. I heard a lot of it wasn't advertised near enough, which was supposed to be on to them, they do the advertising. We did a couple of things on Facebook, but we'll do a better job next year. We won't rely on them to do the advertising.
Have they committed to next year?
We've got a down payment to them already. We haven't got a date locked in yet, because they got to wait for their, their meeting, their annual meeting to set up dates. We're probably going to try and move it a week earlier. Just because it works out a little bit better and stuff. We're going to try and hold on to that last race, that last race option, so we're the last race of the year. There was a little conflict this year with another race out in Ohio. We lost some racers to that, so. We had about thirty-eight racers is what they figure. If we don't have that conflict with the Ohio race, we're probably going to end up with about fifty, which hopefully we can house that many, I don't know. It's getting a little tight up there in the parking lot, but.
Yeah, I heard some comments on lack of advertising, people didn't know about it and so forth, so.
Yeah, they.
The radio station didn't advertise it and everything, so.
Yeah, so we're going to do a whole different advertising campaign on our own for that, rather than count on them to do it. Hopefully it'll get a little bit better and we'll see a lot more people. Everybody that was there, I, I guess everybody that was there pretty much said they liked it, so. Didn't really hear anything bad about it. We're probably going to try and change the golf cart direction or how we route them around a little bit different next year. Just because there was a little bit of a problem with people going through the pits and the racers were all nervous and stuff about that. Because if they happen to start a motor or something and somebody's behind them, they just don't want somebody getting hurt in there, so. We tried to route them a little different through the grass there, right along the lake. Some went that way, some didn't, but.
Ted, when you're speaking of, I'm just looking at twenty twenty-six. So the weekend before Labor Day next year is the very last weekend in August. So are you speaking of possibly the weekend of the twenty-second of August instead?
So we had it the twenty-fourth, isn't it like the seventeenth?
And I'm just wondering if our city beach is still operational at that time? It seems like it's the week after that that the lifeguards go back.
And that's all something that.
I mean, that's really, to shut down, you know, the beach from Friday to Sunday on the last hurrah for the beach to be open would be a concern.
Yep. I guess I didn't really look at it.
And there's, yeah, there's five Saturdays in August in twenty twenty-six.
So yeah, the week before we had it this year would be the fifteenth and sixteenth. You know, it's, it's a matter of making sure the beach is shut down.
Yeah, if you could work with Linda on that and, and, you know, lifeguards accounting on that last weekend to work and families are last hurrah that.
Yep.
And I don't know, maybe they're closed before that weekend, but if you could work with Linda on that, that would be a good thing.
The week before or not.
Because generally sports would be starting the weekend of the seventeenth of August.
Okay, and that's all open. We're, we're, you know, we're in the just planning stages right now for next year already. It was just, just wanted to make sure there wasn't any other concerns that we needed to address. I would like to get a few more bleachers out there on the beach, just because I don't think people could even tell that there was bleachers there. There are only three high or four high that we got, so. Yeah, any other?
I think if, I think if we use the airport more for, for parking and stuff, it'd be a better deal.
Yeah, well, we shuttled from behind my place this year a little bit. That we're going to work on to a little bit and figure out what we're going to do there. If we get fifty racers, we might have to park them down at the airport is my concern. I don't know where else we can park them, because we could only, there was probably a room in that parking lot for another five, I would say.
How many racers did you have this year?
About thirty-eight.
Okay, and your projected forty-six?
Yeah, yeah, in that forty-five range, yep, so.
And where did they launch the boats, right there at the water's edge?
Right at the water's edge, yeah.
Alright.
So I did clean out the sand there, they were getting stuck a little bit, so I did take my tractor down there and cleaned out the sand a couple of times for them, so they're easier to get in and out, but that seemed to work just fine.
Mitch, can we put a temporary speed limit along that road for next year? Do we have to contact the state for that? Okay, I would like to see that, because a lot of the shuttles going back and forth and stuff, you know, from the water's edge down, dropping into like twenty miles an hour, just to, you know, safety.
Just for that weekend.
There's a lot of people there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah, it was very busy down at the water's edge.
Yep.
Very busy. Yeah, otherwise, any concerns?
Get a couple more food trucks and, yeah.
That's, yeah, we were a little late on that this year too, because we had four of them committed, two of them backed out, because they had prior arrangements. And they say as soon as our date is set to make sure we schedule with them, so. It'd be good, you know, the ones that were there were extremely busy.
Right, yeah.
But.
I'm excited, I think it's a great, a great thing for the community and, you know, I congratulate you on a successful weekend, so.
Anything else? Not else? Thank you. All right.
Thanks Ted.
Thanks.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is Steve Nelson, Minnewaska Lake Association. Guess he's not here, huh? Okay. Yeah, he was going to talk about the Starry Stonework treatment in the marina for and so forth, but, yeah, they traded the marina and everything looks good, so.
No, they're going to treat it again this fall.
Well, it'll be.
Out in the Bay Area? Stephen called me and, and that was from there, that they, they, they would like to treat it again this fall, before it gets too aggressive in the spring.
Yeah, but, you know, they probably have to do a survey first and everything, so, yeah.
My, my understanding is they was going to ask if the city of Starbucks would be willing to also treat the marina again this fall.
Well, yeah, if they bring it up, we'll have to consider it and so forth, so. So. He can come before the council and talk about it, so. Okay, next item on the agenda is Jennifer Tolson, talking about Simply Kind requests for cannabis retailer designation, so.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Lannis and this is Jennifer Tolson. You probably know us as your local baristas up in Neon Moon. We're here this evening to ask.
Talking to the mic, honey.
Is your mic on, okay?
We're here to talk about our upcoming business, Simply Kind Cannabis Dispensary.
We met last week with zoning and planning and I was quickly reminded how poor of a public speaker I am and how long-winded I can get when I'm really nervous. So to keep it short, I realize you guys have a long agenda tonight and we provided the packet to you guys ahead of time. We'll touch on a couple quick points and then open it up in case you guys have any questions. Basically, we wanted to reintroduce ourselves to you guys. We provided a quick bio in the back about our lives pre-coffee shop. Just to kind of let you guys know our backgrounds. We wanted to quick give you an update on where we're at in the licensing process. February, we started an application with the state for a cannabis micro business. That involves a lengthy application, but it allowed us to apply for various aspects like cultivation, a retail opportunity, doing extraction, manufacturing, product handling, baking, amongst other things. We've decided just to focus on the retail aspect of it at this point. And with that piece, we received verification, and there's a timeline in the packet for you guys, but essentially in July, they gave us notice that we were pre-qualified applicants or preliminary licensees. And that gives us an eighteen-month time clock to become fully licensed through the state of Minnesota. So they took our original application of fifty-some pages that included a bunch of standard operating procedures, our training guide that we put together, a bunch of other information and said, yep, you guys demonstrated enough pre-planning that we think that you guys would be qualified applicants. Amongst that application, we did not have to disclose a location. So that is the point that we're at now as pre-qualified applicants, that we have to find a location. We are amongst many people in the state of Minnesota at this point. And so at this point, that's essentially why we're reaching out to the city. And you should have a flow chart also from the state that shows that at this point, we should start working with our local city and municipalities to verify that the locations that we found would comply. One was zoning and planning and two with the city ordinances, number one fourteen, for cannabis business operations. So in the research that we've done, we've come up with a couple options and we're looking for confirmation that those two options would meet the guidelines that you guys have set up. And basically, we need that confirmation before we invest multiple or additional funds into these buildings, just to make sure that that would meet those guidelines. So our two options are, one, the Neon Moon. I own the building outright under Tolson Properties. We could split the property down the middle, couple options. And we can go into those options in detail later, using the same front door, but securing a second part of the property. There's a lot of dispensaries out there that are very small little closet dispensaries. Comes down to security. The other option is, I'm in talks right now to purchase the previous Amphison Thompson and Company building. Both of these properties are going to need a lot of construction as far as security buildout. There is a list in the packet that I provided you of the partnerships that we've already formed. This is a new industry in Minnesota, it is not a new industry in the nation. So we have partnerships with a variety of industry experts already. One being Tony, Tony Gallo with Sapphire Risk Advisors. He has worked in a number of states and a number of dispensaries and cultivations for high-risk security buildouts. So he would be assisting us with our floor plans and with all of our security buildout. We've partnered with United Prairie Bank, who's assisting us, North Star Cannabis Consulting, specific CPA metric is the Marijuana Enforcement Tracking Reporting Compliance System, Flow Hub. So all of these would be part of either location that we use. But that's kind of where we're at, is having to determine which location we could use and make sure that we would be within the city's guidelines for either of those locations.
Has anything changed with your pursuit of Amphison Thompson?
I essentially have an offer waiting. I'm just wanting to verify with the council after our meeting with zoning and planning. Just wanting to dot my i's and cross my t's to be certain that, that I'm meeting all of your guys' guidelines. I'm definitely one that wants to ask first, rather than after taking steps, I guess. So that's kind of where we're at, is after this meeting was my next call was to them, I guess. I definitely feel like that would be a better property overall. It has that waiting room, which is ideal. Minnesota does not require you to have a waiting room, it doesn't require you to have a vestibule even. But one of the first people that you will meet is a security officer that's going to check an ID. And having that barrier where there's a secured doorway with fiber access is ideal for many reasons, for employees, for insurance sake, for customer safety, for controlling flow of traffic, for many purposes. So that property just proposes a lot of benefits. Also, we don't want to lose the coffee. And I'm really, really afraid that the Office of Cannabis Management isn't going to allow me to keep coffee in the same building. No matter how secure I make the other half of the shop, I'm just really afraid that they're going to tell me I have to get rid of the coffee shop, part of it.
Was there anything else from planning and zoning that we needed to address, or is it just?
I think, no, at this point, planning and zoning approved it, so.
I think, I think we're still waiting on guidance from the county. Yeah, they, we still need to wait for what the county has, because Starbucks itself wouldn't have an issue with either location, you know, distance-wise from schools and daycares, I think you're in the clear for both of them. But if the county puts in more stringent requirements, you know, we, we don't know. So I can't say one way or another, if you're going to be compliant with both those locations, until they make a decision.
The county just had, just last week, everything was approved with the health.
Public health.
Thank you, yeah. And so that's all been done. They opened up applications September twenty-second at eight AM.
Yeah, so Whitney has sent me an email with that link as well. So I have been in close contact with Whitney and with Kirsten originally, just as we were doing the application. I tend to be an oversharer, I guess, and then, I don't know. I guess I just wanted to tell everyone right when we were applying. I didn't want other people to hear. I just wanted to be the one to tell people, I guess, when we were first applying, like even Mitch, when he came in, I was like, I just feel like I need to tell you that we're applying for this. I don't want you to hear from someone else. You know, I wanted Officer John's read to hear from us, you know, so. Yeah, so I did reach out.
County standpoint, it was, what is our ordinance as far as distance? You know, how far from daycares and that kind of thing? And that's our control at our city level.
Yep.
So as far as meeting all of their requirements moving forward, I would need to be working with the county, certainly. But yeah, I just want to make sure that as far as from the city's standpoint, I think that as far as my flow chart goes from OCM, that that would be their next checkpoint would be with you guys. Once I'm submitting final plans or record, would be checking with you guys that we meet your, your buffer, your ordinances, and then they'd be on to the county to make sure that I'm meeting all of their requirements too, from what I can tell. Again, some of these flow charts and stuff, I'm, we're kind of learning as we go, but.
Yeah, I think from a city perspective, I think they qualify, so, I mean, I did not know that the county passed it. I would maybe want to run it by our attorney to make sure that we have no conflicting thing with our ordinances, if we have to revise an ordinance to accommodate. Or are we, are we good just to?
Are you saying the county's already published?
I don't know if they publish it, that's why I, you know.
Yes, they did the ordinance.
And I haven't, I haven't read it, so I didn't know if ours, you know, if the county says it needs to be ten thousand feet from a school and we're saying a thousand, I don't, you know, I haven't read what the county has published, so.
They, they adopted everything that, help me with their name again?
Yeah, so Whitney from Public Health.
Correct.
Yep, private public health, oh, sorry.
It's the same people who do the licensing for the liquor.
Okay.
They are in charge of this and that, and they adopted both ordinances. There was two different ordinances and the county adopted both. One had to do with how things were going to proceed procedure and the second one was, had to do with the September twenty-second beginning, eight AM, accepting licenses. And so they have moved forward. But to, to check with Tom to make sure our ordinance as far as your location meets, I think, wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay, sounds good. And I can definitely do my due diligence to reach out to Kirsten and the county too, to make sure that I'm double checking there.
I don't think we can do anything more strict than what the county is advising, so, you know, I think you should be fine, so.
I'll definitely do my due diligence and double check as well. Great, thank you guys, thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think Nick Kous is here. I don't know, is there anything on the water plant that you want to mention, Randy?
Oh, a contractor came and looked at it the other day and they're just getting parts ordered, once the parts come in. They're pretty much ready to start as soon as they can get parts and all, kind of depends on pumps and drives and that kind of thing. They're hoping for December, January to get parts, so.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on to personnel reports. Just wanted to mention, I don't know how many people have seen that we're having a dedication of the lighthouse on September thirteenth, this coming Saturday. And I invite everybody to be there at eleven, you know, eleven o'clock is the dedication. We'll have a food truck there and there'll be some music and so forth. And I think quite a few people will be there to, you know, thank the Myers for all of their work and dedication to rebuilding the lighthouse. Because I don't, I don't think it would have happened without their assistance and so forth, so. So, yeah, so that's coming up at eleven o'clock on the Saturday, the thirteenth. And we also have Welcome Week Celebration at Starbucks Depot from five to seven PM. And the Viking boat will be out and so.
My, what, my, if Christie's here, she could maybe answer any questions on Welcome Week? She's been helping plan.
So did you want?
I didn't hear it, two seconds.
Oh, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions about Welcome Week. Every question.
Is it a whole week or is it just two hours?
Okay, so Welcome Week is actually, it's a nationwide event that Welcome America has put on for many years now. It's just new to Starbucks. So West Central Initiative had a grant offered and we said the, the chamber would do it. So it's a whole week that they technically celebrate it nationwide. So it's a whole week that they technically celebrate it nationwide. And we could pick the day that we wanted to from, you know, between the two weekends. So we just picked September 13th. Since it's the first year we're doing it, we're just doing two hours. We have about 10 different countries that are represented, a lot for kids and families, free stuff, make and take things from different cultures and countries. We'll have a live performer doing African drumming, and just some yard game set out. We'll have me Mexico there for food. And I think, yeah, it'll be great for families and little kids. They'll go to each booth or table for each country, and they have a little passport where they'll get stickers and little beads to make a bracelet. And the whole point of it this year, it is share your story. So basically, share where are you from, what's your heritage, and to have good conversation with people about what your culture is, where your ancestors are from, so that is Welcome Week. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Police Department, and Chief Mitch Johnson.
So for calls for service, we had August 203, lived down from July, so things slowed down a little bit. Do you guys have any questions on any of those calls for service? Nothing? Okay. The only thing we have is that we didn't have a part-time officer, Corey Salmon's resigned. I believe there's resignation letter in your packet there, so I think, I think down your new business, you have it to approve, so, unless you want to do it now. But he basically just got out of law enforcement and decided to resign. So he was full-time up in Douglas County, and now he's resigned down here too, so. We will be short part-time help, so we're still kind of looking for that right now, and hopefully we get some people, so.
How many years was he with Starbucks?
Oh geez, I think he started in 2021. 2020 maybe, 2000, might have been 2020, but I want to say 2021. So with that, yeah, we'll be down, we're down to one part-timer right now, so.
Whatever happened to Brock Bowers?
Oh Brett?
Or Brett, yeah Brett.
He has yet to turn in his packet.
Is he still interested?
He's got a background packet filled out, according to him, but just that he has not turned it in, so. I've asked him, talked to him a couple of times, and he keeps telling me he's going to turn it in, but he hasn't turned it in yet, so. I know he's busy. He's been, you know, down south working and stuff like that. He was gone for, I think, a month or so, wherever there. So he's been pretty busy on his own schedule, so that's been the issue there. But I knew, aware of maybe a possible another part-timer from Douglas County that was showing some interest. Not a part-timer, a full-timer up there, but again, we'd have to go through the whole process of depending on, you know, psych eval, background, because the laws changed. Back in the day, we used to be able to, you know, share that information, but now we can't do that anymore, so. So, yeah, I guess we'll have to look at that when the time comes, so. Other than that, the Charger has been on its last legs. We had it fixed, and now it's down again. But it should be replaced here next year. We need to look at, and again, when we have the budget meeting, we can bring this stuff up, but just, I just want to make you aware of it. I might just start looking at getting quotes to see what a new squad would be, because that thing, the transmission went on, now it's knocking again. And it's been sitting there for about a couple of weeks, because I just don't want to go fix the dang thing again. So, but I'll have to see what it is, what's going on with it, see if we can get it back up and operate. If it's not too bad, but squads have been, have been tough on us, so. Especially with the repairs and stuff like that this year, it's just been astronomical, so.
We have the budget meeting coming up, you know, the 17th or whatever, so we'll probably discuss that.
Yeah, I'll bring that, maybe just get some quotes to look at, and whatever, how much it would be to purchase a new squad, whatever, so. Other than that, Night to Night was great. We had several people come out. It was busy, so we had great music and great atmosphere, so that was good. We did it, again, at a different time. We actually did it on the night, Tuesday night, which is the actual night, on the Tuesday night when it's supposed to happen. So it was good, good weather, so everything worked out. And the only other thing I have is that this year, again, it's our turn for the homecoming parade for Minnewaska area schools. So they'll be doing the parade here again, September 26th during their homecoming, that Friday. So we, I've been working with them to prepare for that, so other than that, that's coming up.
I have a question. I saw that you had your body cam was done, and at the county, they do the 30-day input. Does that hold true here for us as well, the audit?
There's a, you're talking about the audit?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had our audit done, and it's finally, we haven't got the audit report back yet.
Okay, and whereas the county had, because when Eric presented, they have been 30 days for community input. And so are we at that point yet, or not?
No, the auditors are still reviewing everything, so.
All right.
Once that's done, then we get that information, and then we can go through that with that.
I saw the bill, so I just assumed it was done.
Yeah, no, it's not, their side of it's not done, so we're waiting on them. But our process is done, but their report is not ready yet, so.
Okay, very good, thanks. Just checking.
Yep. Anything else?
A question about the law enforcement firearm instructor course, that $700 course, does the city get reimbursed?
So that's virtually what we've kind of shared last, forever. The county and Glenwood PD has been our instructors, and they've paid for that course. So they're just looking for more instructors, because they're kind of short. So it's kind of our turn to help out, so we're not really getting reimbursed for that. We get reimbursed for training funds through the state, so we'll get a portion of that back. But yeah, if it's not generally reimbursed, but we'll have our own firearms instructor to help teach in course. So, because we kind of share, we share training with Pope and then Glenwood, and then us, and then they've basically taken their share for several years, and we've never heard.
Is this just like the initial, or is it like a continual firearm safety course where you have to get re-certified?
Yeah, so they'll have to do a recert, which will be cheaper, because now it'll be, it's the initial course. So recertification is just basically like a day course where they go through and run through it. So it'll be a lot, a lot more, a lot less expensive when they do research, so. Yep. Anything else?
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, I don't think we have anybody from the Fire Department here. Randy, did you have anything?
I don't have anything. I'd love somebody to lead or something.
Anybody have any questions?
Are we doing any fall hydrant draining or anything, or is that?
We flush every year in the spring and fall.
Have we done the fall one yet?
No, we wait till just before a freeze on.
Do you have a date for that, so I know when to cover my plants?
The flushing or the freeze?
The freeze.
Okay, next item on the agenda is City Clerk Trezor, and I'll turn it over to Tiffany, so.
Yeah, so in your packets, you'll have the preliminary budgets that Joan had put together for the general fund. She just wants you to kind of look it over and bring it to the special meeting next week on the 17th, because there's going to be that budget work session and special meeting at 12:30. I'm not sure if you have any questions on that, but definitely feel free to bring them up to Joan, or bring them to the meeting for sure, so. Otherwise, the only other thing was that next month's council meeting will actually be Tuesday, October 14th, due to the Addendum People Day, the holiday on October 13th, so. That's all.
So as far as committee reports, I don't know. Do you airport have anything, Tom, or? No? Okay. Chris, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the park, and I see they poured.
Well, Dane's got some great pictures on his phone.
I see they poured cement.
Yes, yep, it looks really, really nice, I think. And it was great that Dane took the time to go down there, and, because there was a little change, and it really turned out to be, it looks really nice. I haven't seen it in person, but he's a pretty good photographer, so the pictures look pretty darn good. So yes, we got our cement poured to Shelter Two on our way for helping to make it easier for everybody to get to Shelter Two. We did have a meeting. We're still working on 100-year celebration. I think we're going to try and go hard on reaching out to different organizations, asking if they want to, and get started on that, you know, this month. We met, we invited Linda Hoffman to our meeting, and again, you know, it'll come more up when we do the budget, but we talked about what are some wish lists that she might have for the city, what are wants and needs that they might have for the city beach. We talked, you know, same thing about Hobel Park, and then Dane brought out a couple of things that were needed still to be done this fall. Do you want to address that, Dane? You're talking about the seed and grass and?
Yeah, I mean Derek just, Derek had just requested down there that they needed to get seed, because everything had washed away. And I said, you know, just work with Randy, you know, it's a small cost item. You don't need the city council approval for it, so.
They have it already.
Okay, well, there we go, so that's done.
Volleyball?
Yeah, we were talking about next year, and I don't know if we can get a quote on it, but Erickson had set up his volleyball net down there, and he put it up himself, and I asked him, why don't you guys get sand in there? And he's like, well, that's what I wanted to do, but the council refused to do it in the past. I was like, I think, I think that's a great idea. I think the city should look into getting sand down at the Hobel Park area, so. And if you did, if you did a small separation, so the sand doesn't come out into the grass, I mean, it would be a little bit, you know, easier to mow, but it'd be something that we need to talk at next year, if we, or talk about at our next Parks meeting, to see if we're going to move forward with that. And we need to know what the community wants, because if it's just one person that wants it, no, don't do it. But I, to me, it sounds like a good idea. Obviously, Randy, I know you probably don't want to. I mean, it's a safety thing though, too, you know, if you're diving for the ball, it's nice to have sand, but.
I would, yeah, rather land on sand than hard, bumpy ground, yeah.
I think maybe if you do a survey down at Hobel Park and see if you have adequate response on that, we might look into something like that, so.
And then, and then we just talked about, you know, a couple of other things that'll be brought up at the budget meeting. And then looking at our list, haven't heard yet, I think to complete the service of sidewalk, that's done. Now that that's done, the handicap parking signs. We did talk about, and Tiffany had some paperwork looking at more uniformity policy, a bench policy. So when people are willing to donate a bench that they're all similar, or not just, you know, willy-nilly, and that we have them and request that they're placed in a, like, on a cement pad, so they're not kittywampus after a period of time. And so Tiffany has some really great ideas on that, that if the council be willing to look at those, and maybe we could do that at the work session and adopt a policy. And then the other thing was the signage on the shoe fly. I can just pass this, you know, down. Again, we can talk about it, but just, we had talked about putting a sign up, so people weren't able to, or know that they shouldn't be climbing on it for safety. That we're just, yep.
We'll probably be talking with the Meyer family too about the shoe fry this coming weekend.
Yeah, that'd be great, absolutely. So other than that, we're just waiting for our new playground set to come in.
I don't, I don't think we should forget about Holly Skogan either, you know.
No, and that was on our list, and we do have Holly Skogan. We did address that. Thank you for mentioning that. We figured, and discussed that it was such an unusual summer with it being so wet, that we really just kind of needed to reset. Definitely understand their concerns, but we also recognize that the city crew did what they could when you're underwater or in a swamp, you know, muddy area. But maybe looking and putting some heads together, thinking, what are some ways that we could, moving forward, make it, I don't know, is there a possibility we can make it less muddy or whatever? But yeah, but we did recognize also, it's a very unusual summer with all the water.
Tiffany, did you hear back from our attorney if this covers us for liability?
I have not yet, but I did reach out, so.
Well, I guess we'll wait for advice on that, and if they say that that covers us for if someone does decide to climb on it and enters themselves, the city's not liable, I think we move forward with that, if, once the city attorney reaches out to us, so.
And, you know, again, we, well, I'll just wait, we will talk more about it at the work session, just on that. But, so anyway, yeah, things are moving along.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All righty, we'll move on to new business. First item is to approve Resolution 2025-15 to accept a $2,500 donation from the Minnewaska Rotary Foundation for the Starbucks City Park.
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
I'll second that motion, and I'd like to thank.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Gackey to accept the $2,500 donation from Minnewaska Rotary Foundation for the park, for the city park, and seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any comments or questions?
Just to thank them for the donation. I would just like to personally thank them as a member of the Parks Committee for the donation.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item is to approve truth and taxation hearing for 6:35 at the December council meeting on 12/8/2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the truth and taxation hearing for 6:35 at the December council meeting on December 8th. I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilor Christensen to approve truth and taxation hearing for 6:35 PM at the December council meeting on December 8th, 2025, seconded by Councilor Tafe. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item is the approval for the city to not waive liability coverage for the 2026, for 2026 through the League of Insurance Trust. And this is an annual thing that we do every year, and so I didn't entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion that we do not waive our liability coverage.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Tafe to not waive the liability coverage for 2026 through the League of Insurance Trust, seconded by Councilor Gackey. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is a request for cannabis retailer designation and city limits by Simply Kind. And do we still want to wait and see what the county requirements are?
Can we make the motion so it's not delayed? That if it's approved by the attorney that our ordinance and the location meet, that, then it can be granted instead of having the two of them wait for another month? Is that a possibility?
Sure, I think we could do that.
Do you want to make that your motion?
Okay, I make a motion that with approval from the city attorney, that our ordinance and their location match, that it is approved, and they can move forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilor Gackey to move forward with the cannabis.
Don't ask me to say it again.
And it's city limits, as long as the city attorney agrees, and seconded by Councilor Tafe. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item is to accept resignation of part-time police officer Corey Salmon's effective August 18th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Corey Salmon's effective 8/18/2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Christensen to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Cody Salmon's effective August 18th, 2025, seconded by Councilor Tafe. Any further questions or comments?
Just want to thank him for his service and for being a part of the community for the time that he was.
Okay, and so we thank him for his service, and any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item is to discuss the need for a new ordinance to regulate illegal dumping, dumping in city-owned dumpsters. If anybody has any questions.
That's something that Amber came, and we had to. That's something that Amber came, and we had a pretty good discussion over it last, after the last council meeting, and just really felt that they didn't have any teeth, and we're seeing people, you know, like, I had a party and I go, instead of dumping it in my own garbage cans, cuz they're full, I'll go down to the beach and dump them down there, and, um, and there wasn't anything that, that, when they looked at the ordinance, that gave them, um, the ability to say, now I'm gonna have to take it, you, or do it again, and I'll give you a ticket or any kind of a teeth, and so I have before you, um, so I did some research and found, you can kinda take it from the Minnesota statutes, which does cover it, but doesn't cover it very well, and so then between that and looking at the city of St. Paul, as a starting point, there's a rough draft of a possible ordinance, it's a little long, um, but maybe something to look at, and I don't even know what the procedure would be to get that going, um, I, Amber did look at it, um, she thought it was something that the police department would be able to use and help stop people dumping their garbage in the city dumpsters.
Is there not so much of that?
Apparently so.
Cuz it's better almost that they did it in there than throw it on the street as you're driving down.
Yeah.
When there's events, there's a lot of extra dumping, and then it was after the car show, I believe?
I think it was before the car show, they put extra garbage cans down there, and I was there doing something, and a truck pulled up and filled three garbage cans.
There, there was a tire and other things that they were throwing in there.
Yeah, so they just would like something with.
I did, and that's when I called Amber and sent her the pictures. I gave them a swift talking to also, and they take most of it out.
Yeah, and then like when we do the dragon boat, it's pretty much every day, every year, the garbages are rolled in, and then you see people drive in, open the back of the car, dump bags.
Time to dump out stuff, yeah.
Then should we have signs put up, this is an offense, da-da-da, we got cameras, even if we don't?
I, well, but it has to be an offense first, and, and there isn't one.
Right, well, I said, if we pass it, then we should have that.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, let, uh, Councilor Gackey, uh, pursue a draft ordinance that, uh, can be brought before the city council and, uh,
Okay, what, what, what do I need to do?
I think, I think what you have here.
I would like to know too how we'd monitor it, you know, uh, you know, cuz we got a lot of city dumpsters around and stuff.
True, I think my understanding, it helped me, Mitch, I'm assuming you and Amber have talked about this, my understanding is it's not so much monitoring, but if I'm driving by, or if I get a phone call from Randy and this is Amber talking.
Drive by and see somebody doing this, and address the issue.
Yeah. Yeah. And at this point, you can't, correct?
Right now, it'd be just, I need to, um, look it over.
Okay.
Just to verify that it meets criteria, and then we raise the council not to.
Very good, I can do that.
And then I would also ask Tom, um, if you need to, if it's required that you have a no illegal dumping sign in reference to city ordinance number, if we can, if we need that to enforce it.
And the city of St. Paul did have, so I would assume if nothing else.
If I add something, uh.
Yeah.
Yep, I can do that.
Mirroring this and referencing, you know, Minnesota statute six oh nine dot six eight, I think is sufficient, I think that would be very easy for him to approve and let us know, so. Ask him, and I think we should move forward with it.
I agree.
I'm assuming you've also seen this, right Mitch?
I have.
Okay, well then, we'll have a talk.
Well, you made the motion, did anybody else second it, if not, else?
I think as long as she's willing to do it.
Yep, absolutely, happy to.
We don't need a motion to do it.
Nope, just assign me homework, I'm good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to, uh, approve the annual transfer of funds for, uh, Geo Bond twenty thirteen A for thirty-eight thousand four sixty-six, and uh, Geo Bond, uh, twenty seventeen A for twenty-two thousand three forty-nine, and, uh, I think, uh, according to Tiffany, the twenty thirteen, uh, bond will be paid off next year, so, and, uh, I'm not sure about the twenty seventeen one, but it'll probably be a couple of years, yeah, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the annual transfer of funds for Geo Bond two thousand thirteen A for thirty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-six, and Geo Bond two thousand seventeen A for twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilor Tafe to approve the annual transfer of funds for the Geo Bond twenty thirteen A for thirty-eight thousand four sixty-six, and Geo Bond twenty seventeen A for twenty-two thousand three hundred and forty-nine, seconded by, uh, Councilor Christensen. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item is to discuss pursuing collection on personal judgment for money owned on the demolition, demolition of property at two oh seven East Seventh Street, and, uh, I don't know, Tiffany, you wanna talk about that or not?
Um, yeah, um, you'll see a letter from our attorney, uh, related to, um, I guess this judgment that's, um, out there for, um, the Berquist Manley home that was raised, uh, I believe in twenty twenty-one. Um, roughly, there's, um, about, um, a little over eighteen thousand dollars that's out there, that's, that the city paid, that we still have not collected. Um, but I guess at this point, um, the property is, was forfeited, um, so at that point, the state sold the property to a new owner, new buyer, who had intentions on building, but it didn't work, um, but at this point, that land is, um, potentially, um, I believe, um, there's a pending sale for that. So something should be coming to that soon, however, now, um, I guess we need to, um, look at the potential and possibility of collecting the money. Um, I guess Joan had reached out, um, to our attorney, just cuz she wasn't really sure, just with the forfeiture process and if there was any way the city could still recover those funds, um, and I guess at this point, um, going forward, um, there's potential and possibility that we're able to collect the funds, um, I guess from, um, from the Berquist and Manley parties. But I guess at this point, we would need, um, approval from the council to move forward with that, um, cuz.
Is that redemption period, uh, have we been, were we notified of a redemption period?
And we don't believe we were, um, but that's something that, um, you know, if approved, if given the approval, our attorney would be able to look into that.
Sure.
We're not really sure how much, like, that would cost to look into, but, um, you know, if there's a way to recover any of the funds, I guess, that's, you know, something that is out there.
And if, if we pursued this, this wouldn't, um, negatively affect HRA's ability to proceed with that, so I feel like not pursuing it would leave money on the table, even if it cost a couple thousand dollars in attorney's fees, it's roughly eleven thousand dollars that's out there, so I would say pursue it, you know.
I agree.
Money on the table, I don't wanna leave it out there, that's owed to us, so.
Are you making a motion?
Um, yeah, I will make a motion that we pursue collection of personal judgment for money owed on demolition of property at two oh seven East Seventh Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilor Christensen to discuss pursuing collection on personal judgment for money owed on demolition of property at two oh seven East Seventh Street, seconded by Councilor, uh, Tafe, uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, which is a state grant agreement for a clear zone action plan at a cost of ten thousand dollars with ninety percent paid by a state grant.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one six.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by, uh, Councilor Tafe to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, sixteen, which is a state grant agreement for a clear zone action plan at a cost of ten thousand dollars with ninety percent paid by a state grant, uh, seconded by Councilor, uh, Christensen, any questions or comments?
Um, just for transparency, what this is, is for the airport, and, um, it's a ninety percent grant paid by the state, and the ten percent is paid by us, and this allows us then in the future, it'll give us more points towards our, um, assessment, and would increase our chance of getting future grants through the airport, so. Anytime you're offered a ninety percent grant, and it's gonna improve future abilities to get more grants, it's kind of a, a no-brainer, so I think this is the right action for the city.
I don't know if, uh, Tom or Ted had any comment about that? Okay, alright, okay, uh, if there's no other comments, uh, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Last item on the agenda is to approve a public hearing for the subdivision request at, uh, four oh six East Third Street, uh, and I believe that, uh, right. That was at our last, uh.
Didn't we already have that public hearing, isn't this for the Franny property?
Yeah, this is for a new property.
Oh.
Yeah, it's the last page of the packets, um, we just need to approve a public hearing, um, it's for a, um, a gentleman who's looking at, um, dividing a small portion of his property and attachment to his next, um, neighboring property to the east, so.
Have they met with planning and zoning yet?
They have, yep, and that was approved, um, preliminarily, I guess, at this last meeting.
Okay, well then, I'll make the motion to approve a public hearing for subdivision request of four oh six East Third Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilor Christensen to approve a public hearing for subdivision request at four oh six East Third Street, uh, seconded by Councilor Tafe, uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, so. That concludes our meeting, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, so we are adjourned, and, uh, thank you, everyone, and, uh.
And go Chicago Bears, are you?
Yep, go Chicago Bears.